Good evening. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Pastor Patrick A. Bennett from the InterQuest Church to come up and lead us in invocation.
Okay, so let's just all close our eyes for a moment and just breathe and we're gonna just release the busyness of the day as we prepare our hearts and our minds for this meeting this night. So just breathe and feel your body being filled and then as you exhale, let's just let go of the day, our agendas, breathing in God's love and feeling God's love filling us now, allowing that love to clear our consciousness, to strengthen us and to open our hearts. And Father, we open our hearts this night and I ask a blessing upon this meeting tonight. I ask a blessing upon the City Council and Mayor Lockwood as they stand forth as stewards for the City of Milton. We ask a blessing upon the agenda this night. We ask for light. Let there be understanding, let there be wisdom, and let there be joy, that this city go forth the rest of this year in an attitude of joyfulness and growth. We give thanks for the opportunity to steward this city, Father, and we ask this blessing. Thy will be done, and so it is. Amen.
Thank you very much. Again, good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting for the Milton City Council for Wednesday, September 7th, 2011, to order. Will the City Clerk please call the roll and make any special arrangements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Will we have to call roll for the September 7th, 2011, regular meeting? I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide a public comment either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items on the first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in order that the speaker cards are received by the City Clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The City Council may allow comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association provided, however, that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the City Clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurmond?
Here.
Councilmember Julie Zoner Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk is out of town. Councilmember Bert Hewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
Councilmember Alan Tart?
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we get started, I do have to say that I feel very safe and secure here tonight. And I notice how all of our Public Safety officers are on one side and our citizens on the other, so I don't know. Don't be scared. They're not riding tickets tonight. All right, will the City Clerk please sound the first item?
My first item is approval of meeting agenda. Agenda item number 11-177.
Okay. Do we have anything else that needs to be considered?
I've got a couple of amendments or things for you to consider under new business, potentially to move agenda item number 11-194, which is the resolution appointing a member of the City of Milton Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Move that to after reports and presentations, as well as I'd like to add an executive session to discuss land acquisition.
Okay. Do we have a motion in a second?
Mayor, move to approve the agenda as recommended by staff.
Second. Okay. Got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. First item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and the City Council, which will provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from either the public or the council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the City Clerk. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or the members of the City Council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. You have five minutes for remarks. Suti, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir, we do not.
Yes, sir. Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The City Clerk, please sound the consent agenda.
First item is approval of the August 1st, 2011, regular council minutes. Agenda item number 11-178. Approval of the August 8th work session minutes. Agenda item number 11-179. Next is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Land Specials, Inc., for Bethany Bend and Cockburn Road Ridgeway Services. Agenda item number 11-180. Our next item is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Blunt Construction Company, Inc., for curb and gutter replacement on Kensington Drive. Agenda item number 11-181. Our fifth consent agenda item is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and the Tomah Corporation for guard rail replacement on Francis Road. Agenda item number 11-182. Next is approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Blunt Construction Company, Inc., for intersection pedestrian improvements. Agenda item number 11-183. Approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Strickland Pipeline and Construction, Inc., for storm drain repair at 369 Taylor Glen Drive. Agenda item number 11-184. Our eighth consent agenda item is approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Urban Collage, Inc., regarding the City of Milton FY11 Livable Centers Initiative, LCI, Highway 9, Highway 400, Small Area Master Plan. Agenda item number 11-185. Approval of a contract between the City of Milton Birmingham United Methodist Church and Special Events Network for the Be at the Movies event on September 10, 2011. Agenda item number 11-186. Next is approval of a revised Parks and Recreation Event License Agreement between the City of Milton and Colleen Riddick of Core Physique to offer fitness camp classes and other related programs. Agenda item number 11-187. Our final consent agenda item is approval of ratification of ordinance number 11-08108, brown bagging ordinance previously adopted at the council's August 1st, 2011, regular council meeting to correct scrivener's error in the ordinance form, changing a reference to Chapter 7 to Chapter 4. Agenda item number 11-188.
Sure. Do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I'll put forward a motion to approve the consent agenda as just read.
No, seconded.
I have a motion by Councilmember Bailey, seconded by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to reports and presentations. Suti, if you would, please sound the item.
My first presentation is a proclamation recognizing 9/11 National Day of Service and Recognition. This is being presented by Councilmember Alan Tart.
Thank you, Suti. Well, the reason we have all these fine officers in attendance with us tonight and some citizens is because, as you all know, next week, we have the 10th anniversary of September 11th coming up. It has been deemed a National Day of Service and Remembrance Patriot's Day, and I have in attendance a citizen who lives in my neighborhood, Ms. Tammy Kimsey, and she approached me a couple of months ago and said, "Alan, you know, the front of our neighborhood always looks so patriotic on July 4th," but she wanted to challenge the neighborhood to show its patriotism on the weekend of 9/11. So if you don't mind, Tammy, I'd like to read an excerpt of what you read or gave to me, because I think it really speaks volumes as to what we really need to remember this day. And we want to challenge, the whole neighborhood of Athenson wants to challenge the City of Milton to display their patriotism this coming weekend as well. And Mayor, I'll leave it up to you after I read the proclamation to talk about what we have planned for this Sunday. So Tammy sent me this. She said, "The 10-year anniversary of that fateful day is important. Our brave men and women are still fighting the battle overseas to keep us all safe here in the USA. Military families like my daughter and granddaughter sacrifice their loved ones being away from their home for nine months or longer so that we can all be free and feel safe at home. As the mother-in-law of a currently deployed serviceman, I would like to offer a challenge to Athenson residents," and again, this is to all of Milton's citizens. "On the day after 9/11, the number of American flags flying in our neighborhood was amazing. This September 11th is our 10th anniversary of that historic day. I would like to challenge Athenson community and the Milton larger city to make our neighborhood one of the most patriotic neighborhoods that day in the City of Milton. On 9/11, I would like to see every home flying an American flag or put smaller flags around their front yard." So challenge you to do that, and with that in mind, thank you for that wonderful suggestion and for coming to share this proclamation tonight. In observance of the 11th anniversary of the September 11th, 2001 attacks on America which killed citizens from 92 different countries, we hereby adopt the following proclamation in tribute to those lost and injured on 9/11 and the many who gave of themselves in service to their communities and to this country in the aftermath of the attacks. Whereas people of all ages and wants of life across America and around the world collectively witnessed an event of immense tragedy on September 11th, 2001, and whereas the events of that day instantly transformed nearly everyone's lives, some through personal loss and many others through an unfamiliar sense of individual and national vulnerability. And whereas an unprecedented historic bonding of Americans arose from the collective shock unifying the country in an outpouring of national spirit, pride, selflessness, generosity, courage, and service. And whereas many brave people heroically and tirelessly and courageously participated in an extraordinarily difficult and dangerous rescue and recovery effort, in some cases voluntarily putting their own well-being at risk. And whereas since that fateful day, thousands of United States servicemen and women from all branches of the military and law enforcement have selflessly given of themselves to ensure it never happens again. And whereas September 11th will never and should never be just another day in the hearts and minds of all Americans, and September 11th, 2011 will be the 10th anniversary of the 9/11 attacks on America. And whereas many citizens may wish to memorialize September 11th by engaging in or making a plan to engage in personal and individual acts of community service or other giving activities as part of a solemn day of remembrance and tribute. And whereas on March 19th, 2009, the United States Congress passed bipartisan legislation authorizing the establishment of September 11th as a federally recognized National Day of Service and Remembrance which President Barack Obama signed into law April 21st, 2009. And whereas the President of the United States on September 11th, 2009 issued the Patriot Day proclamation, officially and permanently designating September 11th as a National Day of Service and Remembrance, and called upon all interested Americans to participate in this observance. Through moments of silence, the flying of the flag of the United States at half-staff, as well as community service and charitable activities in tribute and remembrance, now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Milton, Georgia, in tribute to all of the victims of 9/11 and the many who rose in service in response to the 9/11 terrorist attacks, and to those who now serve in our military and their families at home supporting their efforts, will observe September 11th, 2011, the 11th anniversary of 9/11 as a voluntary day of service and remembrance, and furthermore calls upon all of its citizens and organizations to consider joining in this observance and to engage in activities of tribute, solemn remembrance, and charitable service given under my hand and seal, the City of Milton, Georgia, on the 7th day of September, Mayor Joe Lockwood. So we have some proclamations to give out to folks that are in attendance. If you have served in the military or have a family member that has served in the military or if you are currently a policeman or woman, or a fireman or woman, please come forward and please help us in receiving this proclamation.
Councilmember?
A big thank you to Officer Ward and all of us.
Mayor, do you want to tell them about what's going on this Sunday?
Sure. And as Alan, thank you, Alan, for doing that. And as Alan mentioned, we, the City of Milton is joining with the City of Alpharetta next Sunday, 1:30 at the Alpharetta Public Safety Headquarters. We're doing a joint memorial service for 9/11, so would hope everybody can be there and please tell everybody, all your friends and neighbors, to try to attend. Okay, will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
The next item is a proclamation recognizing Detective Kevin Berry as Milton's 2011 Officer of the Year, presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, I'm gonna read this proclamation first, and then I'll ask Detective Berry to come forward. Whereas Detective Kevin Berry has been selected as Officer of the Year for the City of Milton Police Department for 2011 and nominated by his peers and selected by command staff. And whereas Detective Kevin Berry has performed his duties as a detective in a faithful and loyal manner by exhibiting his dedication by preserving the rights and security of all Milton citizens. And whereas Detective Kevin Berry has worked beyond expectations, putting in numerous days and hours above and beyond the requirements of his assignment by sacrificing personal time after scheduling hours and on off days. And whereas Detective Kevin Berry has demonstrated a strong work ethic, has demonstrated in his ability to bring investigations to a close and to take offenders off the street. And whereas Detective Kevin Berry displays a professional and commendable demeanor with citizens and victims and is an outstanding example to other officers and supervisors. Now therefore, I, the mayor, and the City of Milton, Milton City Council, and citizens of the City of Milton formally recognize Detective Kevin Berry for his outstanding performance as a member of the Milton Police Department. And I further call that the City of Milton hereby recognizes the achievements of Detective Kevin Berry and expresses pride in presenting to him the 2011 Officer of the Year. This is given under our hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on the 7th day of September 2011. And Detective Berry will step forward, as well as the council. And I'd like to ask the rest of our Public Safety personnel to join us for a picture. And also, just every chance I get before all of our Public Safety officers leave the building, I just want to say a thank you to everybody, every one of you. I can't say enough how, what an honor it is to have you guys taking care of us, but also the sacrifice that you guys take every day just to keep our citizens and ourselves, some folks that are complete strangers, that you guys put your life on the line every day. So just want you to know, we really appreciate it. Thanks.
Detective Berry, Detective, before you go, I just wanted to mention that having experienced as a citizen, crime unfortunately, you've done an awesome job. I know that you work extremely hard on behalf of citizens, because at the end of the day, I'm a citizen and so is my family, and I just want to thank you for everything that you do. And I mean that across the board, because I've experienced what it is, and it is extremely well-deserved today. So thank you. My hat's off to you and everybody in this room and beyond. Thank you.
And also, good luck, Officer Ward. We'll be thinking about you.
Yeah, bless you.
Okay. Will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Our next item is a proclamation honoring Taylor Parish and his heroic actions, presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. Taylor could not be here tonight because he's currently in California enjoying his freshman year of college. Excited? Just to give you a little bit of background, on July 8th, Taylor and his friends were swimming at the home, at Eddie Home in the Manor Golf and Country Club when Jordan Lewis, one of the teens, hit his head while sliding into the pool. Once the group noticed, he never came up. They pulled him from the water and Taylor performed CPR well enough to keep Lewis alive despite never having learned the procedure. It's quite a story, and we're glad everyone turned out okay. That's pretty awesome. So I'm gonna read this proclamation and we'll have it sent to Taylor and his family. This is honoring Taylor Parish and his heroic actions. Whereas on Friday, July 8th, 2011, 18-year-old Taylor Parish was swimming with friends at a private pool in Milton's The Manor Golf and Country Club after going to the movies. And whereas the 19-year-old, 19-year-old Jordan Lewis decided to slide into the pool but hit his head, stunning him underwater for more than 90 seconds before he swallowed water and blacked out. Whereas Parish found Lewis underwater and immediately pulled him up, dragging him to land with the aid of friends. And whereas, though he had no prior knowledge, began performing CPR on Lewis using what he had gleaned from television and instinct. And whereas, by his quick and decisive actions and lack of panic, Parish saved his friend's life, bringing him back to a state of semi-consciousness until paramedics could arrive. Now therefore, we, the mayor and City Council of the City of Milton, Georgia, hereby dedicate and proclaim Wednesday, September 7th, 2011, excuse me, as Taylor Parish Day in the City of Milton and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens, given under my hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on the 7th day of September 2011. I just gotta say, what an awesome thing, he was able to do that and to save this other young man. So we're very proud of Taylor, and we'll make sure we get this proclamation out to him. And I guess it kind of goes a little bit with the saying on TV, "I'm not a doctor, but I've played one on TV or I've watched one on TV." So I guess a little bit, there's a little bit of truth, you can learn some things from watching. So fortunately, that worked out good for this other young man. Thank you, Taylor. Excuse me. All right, the City Clerk will please sound the next presentation item.
The next item is presentation of City of Milton's Georgia Recreation and Parks Association 2011 Visibility and Marketing Award to Jason Wright, Communications Manager. This is presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. Each year, the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association solicit nominations from all parks and recreation agencies from around the state of Georgia for its annual publication awards. The GRPA, the Georgia Recreation and Parks Association, publication awards are separated by type and agency population. The nominations are judged by the GRPA Visibility and Marketing Committee. This year's nominations were judged in June at the GRPA Board of Trustees Meeting held in Dublin. The City of Milton Parks and Recreation Department was selected for a single event nomination for the Concert in the Park Boogie Down at Birmingham Flyer, representing population category 30,001 to 80,000. The award was presented to Milton Parks and Recreation during the GRPA Conference held in Macon on August 17th. This was the second year in a row that Milton Parks and Recreation was selected for the publication award. In 2010, the Remember to Remember Milton Memorial Day Ceremony poster was selected as the winner. Both marketing pieces were created in-house by our own communications manager, Jason Wright. The City of Milton is incredibly fortunate to have someone with Jason's creativity and skill set to produce the city's publications and marketing pieces. Many cities and countries, many cities and counties must contract these services to an outside party. It speaks volumes that Jason's work has been recognized two years in a row on a state level. I am sure there will be many more awards and recognitions to come for Jason in the future. Congratulations, Jason, and the Parks and Recreation Department for this award. And I'm gonna come down here and present this award, and I'd like to have Jason and his family come up too, as well as the citizens. And I hear, Eric is, their little girl, she's cheering already. She's so well behaved.
She's ready to boogie down.
Come on, Eric, come on.
Put a Vegas picture, nobody, no one else did that, so yeah. Come on in here.
[inaudible]
Come on.
Get the whole player ready in here.
Is she gonna count four?
One, two, three.
I didn't do it just like I said.
One more.
You gotta take three.
You gotta take three.
Three, okay.
All right, you ready?
One, two, three.
There you go.
[applause][1779.13]
All right, you ready? One, two, three. There you go.
And I just, I have to say, well, all of our, all of our staff are very important and do a great job. Jason's right out in the front, and he's the face of the city as far as all the communications. And I just get so many compliments on Jason's work. And so, I think everybody else would agree it was a great, great decision to hire Jason, and we're glad you're here with us at City Milton. So, thanks.
Mayors, we move forward in the agenda. I believe we moved an item in new business to right after reports and presentations. That point D is not here yet, so it's okay with the council. Let's pursue with the agenda until I get here.
Okay.
Do we have to make a motion to change?
Just a motion to...
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve, to move Agenda Item 11-194 to the last item under New Business.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. The motion is second to move this on to the last item in New Business, and then we'll see if the point D's here or not. Okay?
Take a vote on that.
Yeah. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And if he is somehow, I keep checking my phone to see if he sends me a message, but, because we confirmed again today. And if he is still stuck in track, traffic or whatever, I guess I can just go ahead and introduce him, and then he can be sworn in.
Yeah, yeah, we can still, we can still do that.
Yeah, or we can amend the agenda again when he's here.
Okay.
Okay. And then we'll move on to our first presentation. Will city clerk please sound those items?
First item is approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 22, Fire Prevention and Protection, Agenda Item Number 11189. Next is approval of an ordinance to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2011 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda item number 11190. Next is approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of Milton, Georgia, to adopt a fiscal 2012 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda item number 11191. Our next first presentation item is approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 11, Business Occupation Tax, Licenses and Regulation of the City of Milton Code of Ordinances to modify the annual license fee levied on insurers to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Agenda item number 11192. Our final first presentation item is approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 48, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Public Places, Article 3, Division 2 of the City of Milton Code of Ordinances for the abandonment or acceptance of public right-of-way. Agenda item number 11193.
Do I have a motion as second?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the first presentation items.
I'll second.
The motion by Councilmember Hart, second pack, Councilmember Thurmond. All in favor, is there any discussion?
Yeah, just got an observation real quick. I noticed that Agenda Item Number 11190 and 11191 are in our agendas twice. So, I don't think it makes a difference, but we probably need to renumber the second occurrence of those under first public hearing.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Why?
Yeah, probably what we do there is leave it as first presentation, and then we'll amend the agenda item numbers in the public hearing. Good observation. Thank you.
Yeah, good call. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, if we move on to our public hearing, little city clerk, please sound the first item.
First item is approval of an ordinance to adopt amendments to the fiscal 2011 budget for each fund of the City of Milton, Georgia, amending the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, amending the several items of revenue anticipations, prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. Agenda item number 11190. First presentation on September 7th, 2011, today. Ms. Stacy Ings.
Before we get started, let me just reference that this will be Agenda Item Number 11197. Okay. And that the next item will be 11198.
City Mayor and Council, the goal of the fiscal year 2011 budget amendment is to revise the departmental budgets and interfund transfers based on activity to date and future projections. To summarize, the revenue appropriation increases by $767,079. Expenditure appropriation increases by $1,496,174. This is different from what was put in your budget packets. You received an amended document that you should have reported. The change was a calculation error that I realized minutes before the meeting and had to change really quick. And it was a capital error for the amount of money that would be taken out of fund balance. So, the total amount that will be taken out of fund balance, the difference between revenues and expenditures, is $729,095. And just to explain where that money is going to, at the end of fiscal year 2010, the city's general fund, fund balance totaled approximately $7.8 million. During fiscal year 11, opportunities arose to acquire two pieces of property, acreage in Highway 9 for the public safety campus and to provide connectivity between the near high school and Highway 9. And the second one is a 200-plus-year-old house on Huckle Road whose use is yet to be determined. The total amount of the acquisitions was $1,645,457. This was funded by contingencies in both the Capital Projects Fund and the General Fund, as well as a portion of the fund balance. The General Fund fund balance will decrease by $729,095. The revenue amendments are done based on an analysis by activity to date. A projection was completed using available data indicating that the fiscal year 2011 revenue estimates could be adjusted by the amounts indicated in your packets on table, the table on pages 3 and 4. Some of the most significant changes are property taxes were increased by an overall total of $617,389 to account for higher than anticipated prior year collections. Licenses and permits were increased by $101,867 due in large part to a change in the contract with SafeBilt for building inspection services. Previously, the contract called for revenue sharing of 80%, 20%, 80% going to SafeBilt, 20% coming to the City of Milton, and the company would provide the permit technician. The contract was renegotiated with a 70%, 30% split, and the permit tech was brought onboard as the city employee. Building permit fees were also higher than anticipated. Charges for services increased by $38,352 due to court admin fees trending higher than anticipated. Fines and forfeitures are trending lower than anticipated. A decrease of $82,275 is being proposed. Miscellaneous revenue was increased by $78,746 to account for the cell tower lease payments that we received from Fulton County and AT&amp;T. Moving on to expenditures. When budgeting for group insurance costs for employees, we used an average cost of $67,100 for each employee, with the understanding that it was going to cost less for those employees to choose individual coverage, and then more for those employees to choose family coverage. At the end of the year, some departments had excess funds in group insurance line item, and some are showing a deficit. IT and Public Works fall into the excess category, and ComDev falls into the deficit category. So, we're requesting a decrease of $22,880 from IT and $4,300 from Public Works, and an increase of $27,180 for ComDev group insurance line items. The general government buildings department is where we account for the costs associated with the acquisition of the new land and buildings this year. The actual purchase price is accounted for in the Capital Projects Fund. $44,600 is requested as an increase to cover a cost for engineering, surveying, and rental services for those lands, land and building. $15,000 is requested as an increase for repairs and maintenance for the head block house. Moving on to the fire department. We're requesting that $16,000 be moved out of the facilities repair and maintenance account and moved to the Capital Projects Fund to cover the cost of station repairs currently underway. In the community development department, there's an increase of $23,500 in salaries and wages account to account for bringing apartment tech in-house and for hiring an interim community development director. And other financing uses, as well as other costs. The total cost of land acquisitions, as I mentioned earlier, was $1,625,457. We have funded the acquisition through a portion of the projected revenues that are over the original revenue appropriations. That's $743,579. General fund contingency of $133,453. Capital projects fund contingency of $98,933. And then fund balance of $669,495. I know I mentioned earlier that we're proposing to use $729,095 of the fund balance, but a portion of these funds is to cover the cost, additional cost that were incurred associated with purchase of properties that totaled $59,600. And that's accounted for as in that general fund balance department. Moving on to the special events fund. We are simply reallocating the regulations for revenues to account for them in proper line items. And you can see what those adjustments are on page 1 of those. And the confiscated assets fund. In your original packet, you have the confiscated assets fund, and for some reason, it got deleted out of this packet. We have seized funds from the U.S. Marshals Office, as well as our partnership with HIDA. We are requesting an increase of $4,400 for U.S. Marshals cash confiscations and $22,936 for HIDA cash confiscations. According to our auditors, moving on, according to our auditors, we need to change how we account for budgeted fund balance. Currently, we're using revenue accounts for fund balances that we're adding back, or amounting back to the fund balance, and we're using expenditure accounts for decreases in the fund balance. So, we actually need to change how we account for those and use the actual fund balance account. And so, you'll see in confiscated assets fund, as well as other funds, while moving money into the proper budgeted fund and balance account. Does that make perfect sense? I'm sure.
Just shifting from one account to another.
It is. Also, in the confiscated assets fund account, we're requesting an increase of $1,000 in general supplies for the purchase of ammunition. And the operating grant fund is showing an amendment of $25,000 apiece for the receiving expenditure of the BURN-JAG grant for AFIS, which is an identification system, and another $25,000 from GMA for the purchase of Rapid ID. In the hotel motel tax fund, we're projecting to receive $12,000 more than we anticipated for the excise tax. These funds will be transferred to the general fund to account for, to offset the cost of designing the website and sending e-bots. In the Capital Projects Fund, we are showing up the budgeted fund balance appropriations. The budgeted funds are the sidewalk replacement account and the tree recompense account, and the budgeted fund balance revenue account to the proper line item, as I just mentioned. Just to explain briefly, I've split those out in the past, or as you can see, I've split the sidewalk replacement account out and the tree recompense account out from budgeted fund balance. We've already received those monies, and so, if we continue to leave it in the line item, it shows that we are anticipating to receive that much money again this year. So, I'm moving those monies back into the budgeted fund balance account. They are already accounted for in an expenditure line item. They don't need to be accounted for in the revenues again. There's an increase of $6,300 that you'll see in the crabapple paving fund, and this is where we are accounting for fees that we are charging developers in the crabapple station subdivision to eventually pay for topping for the streets in that subdivision. The developer, I guess, in the subdivision has defaulted and has gone bankrupt, and so, there are no funds available to actually top it. And so, we are putting that cost on the actual lots themselves.
Can you specify again where this is?
Crabapple Station. There's an expenditure offset, there's an expenditure that offsets the revenue of $21,530. And this is an increase in the insurance proceeds account that we received from an insurance company of the individual that damaged the signals at Bethany and Carver intersection. The offset is the expenditure line item for intersection improvements in that, for that intersection. As a part of our involvement in HIDA, we receive a vehicle stipend of $500 per month. We're proposing an increase of $3,000 in this line item that is offset by an increase in the police vehicle replacement reserve account. In the expenditures side of things, and for the fire department, we're requesting an increase of $16,000, and this is the funds that were going to go into the Capital Projects Fund to account for cost of station repairs. And there's also an increase of $9,750 in the sidewalk line item under Public Works to account for revenues that we received this year. In the capital grant fund, there's an increase of $23,400 to account for funding received from the assistance to firefighter grant for the exhaust system. These funds were spent in fiscal year 2010, but we weren't reimbursed until this fiscal year. The offset is a budgeted fund balance. And again, you also notice that we are uncorrecting where the budgeted fund balance line item is. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Before we get into questions, do we have any public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you don't have any public comment, I'm going to close the public hearing and then open it up to questions from staff or comments.
Also recognizing, if you don't have them tonight, this is not done. This public hearing tonight, this comes back on the 19th for additional discussion, modification, et cetera.
Does anybody have any questions?
Do you have a couple?
You want to go first, Julie?
Okay. I think I have three questions. I'm a little dizzy down here because I was writing with this marker. Whoo, okay. Big fun rest of the minute. Under, on page 12, salaries and wages. Could you just clarify that for me? Because I guess I was thinking that with the loss of a director and a gain of director, it would be a net.
There was a vacation payout that you have.
Okay.
At the end of somebody's employment, as well as, I mean, that's the small, the portion that we paid for the interim community development director is small in comparison to the increase in costs that we attributed, that are attributed to the permit tech.
Okay. So, basically then, because we're getting a, we're getting a director in this fiscal year that'll pick up that budget item, we're basically just having to amend it for vacations, is what you're saying?
Vacations and the permit tech.
And the ex.
Most of this was when we renegotiated with SafeBilt and went from 80, 20 to 70, 30. I mean, you can see this on paper kind of illustrates why that was the right decision to make. In fact, on the first page, we're increasing revenues by more than $100,000. As a product of that...
What page are you on, Chris?
I'm on page 2, where we're talking about revenue amendments. One of the things when deciding to go from 80, 20 to 70, 30 with permit tech being brought onboard here is we did some pretty in-depth analysis as to where that, you know, if that was the right decision, or if it was right to stay at the 80, 20 and have them continue to have the permit tech on their payroll. Yes, there are, I don't want to lead you to believe that all 100,000 of this is the savings that's attributed to a permit tech, because we did anticipate permits, or permits did increase. But to see an increase in a revenue line of over $100,000, and then to see an increase in a revenue line, or in an expenditure line of 23, I mean, that gives you some sense as to why we felt that was the right decision.
Okay, no problem. On page 22, item number 6. That's actually in... That's actually an increase.
Correct. And it's offset by the revenues.
Yeah, okay.
That's also increased.
And then, I know you presented this a couple of weeks ago in our work session, but what are you anticipating the year-end fund balance being?
The year-end fund balance is gonna be a little over seven million dollars.
Okay.
So about where we are now.
Okay.
I don't anticipate all of the expenditures that are appropriated to be skipped, so we probably will receive more savings in expenditures than what we're, I mean, I didn't do budget amendments for all of those expenditures.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Julian?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, I know that we obviously had this coming back to us on the nineteenth. Do you anticipate any other potential adjustments from staff between the budget that we first presented and these amendments? Or basically between those two, those are the things that now we need to just digest and ensure.
I believe what we, what's presented to you tonight is pretty much what you're gonna say on the nineteenth.
So you don't anticipate any other changes from that?
With the addition of that extra page in the confiscated assets.
Recognizing that we're within twenty days of the close of the fiscal year, I don't, this is, this is as, I, I don't. We've been through and scrubbed this by department. These are the ones that need official council action. This will close out our year in a, in a very good place, and we'll move into the next fiscal year.
Anybody else?
I think, I think it's important to note, because some people will look at this real quick and say, oh, you're, you're increasing your expenditures by almost six hundred thousand.
That's right.
In reality, all of that was, plus some, was due to the acquisition of property out of our fund balance.
So realistically, our revenues are much better than we had expected them to be, and our expenditures
are about what is expected, other than the additional land that we had decided to purchase.
That's right. And, you know, during the course of the fiscal year, we all, you all, us too, made a decision that those two land acquisitions were right for the city, and those are some of the decisions you get to make when you have a fund balance that's funded beyond what is statutorily required. It's that those opportunities present themselves, and you get to make those decisions. You know, and it's, it's important to highlight, too, that those two land acquisitions that we may have paid cash for, so there's not, there's not even interest being paid on those two acquisitions, and it still leaves us with a fund balance in excess of seven million dollars. It's a, it's a good story. I realize people will go right to the numbers and say, revenues over expenditures, and oh, there's a problem, but you can put a little bit of fact behind it, and the story is a strong one.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, is that we're in a much better financial position than the majority of any community, whether that be municipality or county in the region, and not many people can say that.
Okay. If there's no more, then we'll move on to the second public hearing item. Who wants to sound that?
Next item is approval of an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Milton, Georgia, to adopt the fiscal two thousand and twelve budget for each fund of the city of Milton, Georgia, appropriating the amounts shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting several items of revenue anticipations prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures to exceed actual funding available. This is agenda item number eleven one nine eight, first presentation tonight on September seventh. This is Stacy Inglis.
What we're presenting tonight is the same document that we discussed during the August twenty-second work session. This document can be found on the city's website. The total projected revenues for the general fund in fiscal year two thousand and twelve are seventeen million three hundred ninety thousand three hundred eighty dollars, and the total expenditures are eighteen million six hundred eighty-nine thousand two fifty-one, leaving a difference of approximately one point three million dollars. As we discussed at the work session, over the years, we've been able to build a healthy fund balance of roughly seven point eight million dollars. These funds are typically used to mitigate current and future risk and are essential in long-term financial planning. We're proposing to utilize one million two hundred ninety-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-one dollars of the fund balance for one-time capital project expenditures, leaving a balance of approximately six point five million dollars. This will allow the cities to carry out some much-needed capital improvements such as intersection improvements at Bethany and Cogburn and pavement management. We're still in the final phases of working out costs for employee benefits, so the document before you tonight will change by the time you see it again at the work session on September twelfth. It will only change for the better. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Julian?
Thank you, Mayor. Just on the healthcare piece, I know we did talk about that. Are we getting a sense of what sort of improved costs and estimates when we took that out for the market, or is this still too early to know?
Well, no, it's not too early to know. It's probably too early for me to, you know, commit to something because it is still changing, and I've asked for a couple of follow-up things with our benefit broker to make sure that we make a good decision and to make sure that I don't select a plan that all of a sudden has seventy-five percent of employees all of a sudden not be able to go to their particular doctor. So, you know, with the, with the host of disclaimers that comes with, I'm still waiting on data.
Yes.
I'm pleased with the direction that we're going at this point. I anticipate that healthcare costs, at least at this point, if some of those things that I'm waiting on hold true, we're in a position such that I believe healthcare costs are gonna be flat over last year. I know we talked about a twenty-six percent increase initially is where we started. Some of the things we're working on right now, we've got those costs down to flat over last year with some savings to the employees as well. So I'll go that far tonight to say that it looks good, which is why I wanted Stacy to mention that the amended budget that comes back to you is gonna come back, I believe, as a better bud, is one that we like better because it frees up some money that was encumbered. And then you all will get to decide what you want to do with that, whether or not you want to reappropriate that, whether or not you want to, you know, maybe let it, let it just stay in the fund balance, which is fine. I mean, again, those will be decisions that we probably make next Monday night at the work session, but my sense right now is that we're more in line with flat costs over last year than we are with the twenty-six percent increase. So let us keep plugging away with it. Again, I want to make sure that I don't jump too fast just because of numbers and all of a sudden the unanticipated consequences. We have a network that seventy-five percent of our employees don't have their doctor. But as long as we get some of those answers satisfied, I think we're in a, we're in a good spot.
Okay. And just along those same lines of insurance, there was one other line item. There was obviously a new one that we had taken on because of some items that are out there. The last time we spoke was whether or not that was a cost that we anticipated we could have not removed, but if there was anybody that was able to provide that additional insurance at a better rate, and I don't know if...
Yeah, we're still working on that. We'll talk a little bit about that later tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
I think it was since we are gonna, we are making a decision to go into our fund balance, I think it's important for people to understand what our money is actually spent on. If there was a way we could get a little breakdown that showed how much of it's going to operating, how much is going to debt service, how much of it's going to capital improvements, I think that would help people realize that, you know, we're making a conscious decision to spend some of this fund balance on capital improvements, and we're not just have our overhead expenses that are.
That's right.
More than we can handle going forward.
In fact, it's about two capital improvements, so it's, it's real easy. And the bulk of it, people are going to benefit from when they drive through the Bethany-Cogburn-Hopewell intersection. That's what's, the construction related to the roundabout at that intersection is the largest bulk of it, which is the intersection immediately north of the new high school intersection. So it seems like a very natural place to allow some of these funds to be spent so that we can get that off the shelf and, and get it built.
Right. And I think if we had some kind of summary thing that'll let people know that, I think that would be helpful so they don't have to look through our several hundred pages of the budget book.
You don't like going through budgets page by page?
I do. Everybody does. Okay?
I guess I'm thinking about this, and I'll have more of these questions later in our work session, but just one thing that maybe next week we can speak about, the landfill fees that we get in terms of how those get allocated. It doesn't, there's an opportunity to match some of those fees with some of the things that are going on environmentally. I know that we've got some very small projects and things that are out there, but I just wonder if we, if that's not a place that makes sense to link incoming revenue with things that are tied specifically to those projects that are benefiting the environment within the community. So just, it's food for thought as we look between now and next week.
Okay. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Do you know, is there anything else? Comments from council or staff? Okay. No items on the zoning agenda or unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. The City Club, please sound the item.
Do you want to go ahead and move to the...
Yes, he is here. Looking dapper.
So, you know, to the extent that we've already amended the agenda to move it after, let's, let's go ahead and continue with the agenda in the order in which it's approved at this point, which is item two before one.
We would love a resolution to accept the city of Milton visioning plan dated March eleventh, two thousand and eleven, prepared by Lou Oliver, Inc., whole town solutions, and as amended by the community development department. This is agenda item number eleven one nine five. Mr. Tom Wilson.
Mayor, Council, this amendment seeks to bring alignment to the concerns that you expressed during your work session with Mr. Oliver when you presented the document. I think it's important to separate in your mind, if you would, the conversation you had after that document was presented and all the valuable information that you talked about. Separate that from the document itself. This amendment just amends the paper document. This document is generally nature almost everywhere, except for a couple of places in which it may have gotten a little too specific, specifically that is, they use it along Mid Broadwell Road and maybe some density that it may have alluded to some density. So the amendment that you have tonight seeks to align your concerns with the paper document itself. I think it's important also to note that you're not, you're not approving this document, you're just accepting this document into your library of information. It does not change any of the existing ordinances or regulations. The crabapple plan is still in place. But, I don't want to do it. So I'd like to answer any questions if you have any questions about that.
Thank you, Mayor. The only question I have is, what are our plans from here? I mean, I know this provides a vision as far as traffic and, and development and that kind of thing, which will, you know, provide a scope when we move forward, but what are the specific things that you guys see, besides the specific traffic improvements that we've already identified for this fiscal year?
Traffic's the biggest one.
Right.
Because right now, if there ever were a time for us to figure out how some of those traffic improvements that are contemplated in the plan can be developed, now's the time because right now we've got Brownfield out there in many places where as soon as we end up with construction on it, now you, all of a sudden, become very difficult in implementing the plan. That's where we have focused our key efforts and, and pretty strong key efforts, as a matter of fact. We spent a good bit of time trying to figure out how we get that northwestern arc in there. And, you know, we're in that, at that point that we're going back and forth and figuring out exactly how that may be a possibility. I'll tell you, if it doesn't become a possibility, there's already approved stuff out there. If stuff starts coming out of the ground, we're gonna have to then start to modify the plan. So, you know, some time spent this week, some time anticipated next week. I mean, that really, talking about something that's ongoing, it's, I mean, it's, it's living right now. You know, beyond that, obviously, we'll still, there's still a lot of different dominoes that need to fall as to how that plan becomes, becomes real. Much of that will be determined whether or not we get some kind of word out of the library board, whether or not we move forward with an obvious selection for City Hall, if that's where we choose to put it and where we choose to put it out there. You know, as far as some of the steps that I think we talked about in order to make that plan real, we've had work sessions where we've discussed different versions of architectural code and transfer development rights and all that good stuff. I'll introduce you to our new community development director here in just a little bit during staff reports, who has even started to work on some of that kind of stuff on her first day. So I don't know if that answered your question, but there's stuff that's going on right now.
So it's multiple, yeah, okay.
It's, the, the plan is, is far from collecting dust. I don't have anything to report that we've gotten to, you know, that this is a proposal or a recommendation, but the plan is far from, from just sitting around at this point.
I guess I kind of see this similar to what was done on Highway Nine, where you had the Highway Nine Design Group that provided recommendations, and then their forthcoming from that were specific changes to ordinances and that kind of thing as a result of that, which I guess that'll be part of it.
Right. To the extent that there's critical stuff going on right now.
Right.
It's the transportation.
Right.
I mean, that's the one we have an ability to make a difference on, if, if we can find a way to do it.
Of course.
Julian?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Tom. I appreciated that summary. And just to maybe give it even additional amounts of clarity, and hearing Chris, your point about transportation, is it sounds like there's the components that this does not detail, obviously, and I'm just gonna read it, what you said was, any of the density that's proposed on Mid Broadwell as well as location. And then I didn't hear you mention this specifically, but I would like you to clarify because in that plan, there were some areas that would have effectively required sewer extension, and so I just want to make sure that as a matter of record tonight, that this also does not contemplate, nor does it agree to sewer extension in any particular area, that that would need to be discussed as a separate part of the reconciliation with that plan. Is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay. So if we just kind of maybe, as a matter of record, make sure that it's not just density, but it's density as well as that underlying infrastructure, because that's obviously critical of the future of the area. The other would be just that distinction, as Chris said, with transportation. The, the transportation that's being contemplated and discussed right now, that goes back to kind of that, I'll call it maybe tier one, tier two transportation of Lou reference in terms of where would you have the greatest impact with one of those being the roundabout at Crabapple that would also then connect to Bourbon Hand Highway, if I'm not mistaken. So that would be tier one, and that, that sort of transportation that's underway right now wouldn't contemplate having to change the density. It's first to say, where do you get some of that infrastructure short, separate and distinct from density? Is that also accurate?
I think that's accurate.
We're, we're looking at the plan at this point, and, I mean, we didn't ask Lou to prioritize which ones were more important.
Exactly.
We looked at the total network, and then we relied upon our experts to prioritize.
Right.
What order of different things came in.
And I think, I guess that was when Carter, who's still here, when we had, you know, we had the, the vision, obviously, as Lou brought that forth, but also as part of what Carter talked about, was within the transportation network. So that was separate and distinct from the visiting meeting that we had. But where Carter specifically talked about if we were gonna have immediate improvements, which of those would be the tiers? And as I recall, part of the research that Public Works was going to be doing was determining what those costs would be, if the surveys, if the environmental surveys, if we could bundle those to try to help mitigate expenses. So when we refer to transportation, I'm assuming that that's kind of the pieces that we're talking about.
I'll, I'll tell you, the one that's the priority one that we're working on is what I have affection of, I guess, now called the northwest bypass. I hate to use that word because obviously, somebody's gonna say we got the northern arc. But if you can picture that, well, picture the way traffic naturally flows out there today. It's just, it's not flowing out there right now in any type of, of a systematic way. It's just flowing where the release points are on the road. I mean, you go sit out there in the morning and you can watch traffic.
Oh, yes.
Already following some of these, you know, roads that are really not designed for the type of flow that's on them. So, you know, to the extent that we can adequately operationalize the roadway to function as a roadway, I mean, that, that makes sense. And that's, so, you know, full disclosure, we're working on the northwest bypass.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's.
And that was why I'm saying that.
Trying to, trying to put all of our effort right now into how that gets in there.
And I just wanted to clarify that that transportation effort is separate and distinct from the things that we're saying. This document does not contemplate yet, including that transportation's not contemplating, it's not required for more density necessarily. It's solely looking at the infrastructure at this point. Would that be accurate?
Right. Sure.
Before we leave, I have one more comment. The city attorney has suggested a slight change in this amendment, and it's at the very end of the paragraph that begins with generally. That last sentence, the, the council further understands that references in this document regarding specific land use types, transportation elements, and architectural treatments are suggestive and not prescriptive. The city attorney suggests a different wording for that, and I'd like to read that. Where, where I've written suggestive and not prescriptive, he is suggesting that it should read suggestive or aspirational and not mandatory or binding.
And would you, would you care about, I mean, under, under the paragraph entitled generally?
Generally, yeah.
I was looking for a sentence that began with generally.
Could you repeat that again, Tom?
The last three words there, which are suggestive and not prescriptive, and the last four words, the city attorney's suggesting that we substitute suggestive or aspirational and not mandatory or binding.
And is the intent, I don't know if you're making that recommendation or can, is the intent that that clarifies?
He didn't like prescriptive, and I can tell you what he said.
Okay.
Or you probably know. He said it's a bit awkward. It was his opinion was that it was a bit awkward.
I think, I think you've hit on it in the use of the term prescriptive implies action by the city to take property, and this kind of just adds a rewording and clarifies it a little bit.
Again, it's a general document. We're not agreeing to anything at this point.
You're not adopting anything, and you're just taking this document into your library of information, and if it influences you in any way, I guess, whatever's presented in this document, it's done its job.
And just my final question, this, Chris, I guess, would be, the whole discussion that we all have had about reconciling master plans to existing plans, I'm assuming that that's part of what obviously our new community director will be involved with. But just as we move through this process, is understanding just those details, which obviously that we don't yet have.
There's still missing pieces.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, just, you know, all these words, prescriptive, and all that, just get me worried. I wanna make sure that I understand it as very, very clear. And without arguing over why we call this a, have the word "plan" in this at all, because to me, a plan is much more detailed than what this is. What we're voting on is to allow this document to become part of the library of things that we can reference. So, when we start to build a real plan, when we start to reference certain things, we can call in this document, make use of it, without having to worry about, has it been accepted, reviewed, and all that other stuff? Is that correct?
That's essentially what we do.
Okay.
And just to clarify, because that was a good point, is that we're accepting it without the details that may have been proposed at the time. We're saying that we accept it as a vision, not with any of those details.
You're accepting it with this amendment, which has further been amended by the city attorney for that last comment.
Yes.
Suggestive and aspirational, not...
One of the things...
I know, it waters it down really, really bad.
Not mandatory or binding.
Okay.
One of the things that Councilmember Longori's points, I'll give you, I mean, a case in point, is that at some point, we're going to ask, and, you know, we've even started this ball rolling, to potentially, you know, use some state funds for roads or for this, you know, at one point, we're gonna have to say that we've decided to go down this route because of something, and that the something that I'm gonna present at that point is a resolution that says that we've accepted this plan, you know, so it also even, the action you're taking tonight will assist with that as well.
Right, but a lot of discussion was had at the work session where we reviewed this about how can we, A, start calling it a plan, or B, take any action whatsoever without understanding what the costs associated with it are. And I haven't seen any follow-up in terms of trying to put a number on what that would be. So, I just wanna make sure that this isn't, and like the language said, you know, this isn't a commitment, this isn't mandatory, this isn't prescriptive in any way, shape, or form, it's just a, something that we can refer to in the future.
Aspiration.
Okay.
All right. I think, Bert, did you have something?
Well, I'd just like to make a motion to approve a resolution to accept the City of Milton Visioning Plan dated March 11th, 2011, prepared by Lou Oliver, Inc., Whole Town Solutions, and as amended by the Community Development Department, with the further clarification or change of the last four words in the paragraph entitled generally to the ones that were read into the record by Mr. Wilson. Agenda Item 11-195.
Second the motion.
Got a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Tark. Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's unanimous. Okay. Thank you, John. Ms. City Clerk, if we could go back to item number one, a new business.
Approval of a resolution, amending resolution number 11-03173. Resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for District Six. Agenda Item Number 11-194. Councilmember Alan Tark.
Thank you, Suzy. So, Coach, you had me scared there for a little bit, but we moved you in the agenda, and thank you for stepping up to the plate. As you guys know, probably, I have a recent vacancy, Ms. Sandy Shelley, on the Parks and Recreation Board, and I thank her for her service, and I'm excited to put forward my appointee for, to replace her. Mr. Coach Ron Hill has spent the last 26 years, first of all, Coach, you, just reading to the record, you live at 13325 Avonson-Ives Way in District Six. Coach Ron Hill has spent the last 26 years devoted to coaching football at various levels. He currently serves as the Assistant Athletic Director, Director of Student Life at the Atlanta Sports Academy in Dawsonville, Georgia. His career started in 1985 with Chesapeake Bay Neptune's in the Pro Developmental League in Virginia. He held various positions up to head coach with two teams at that level, compiling a 120 to 17 record over 13 seasons. He continued to coach at the high school level at Booker T. Washington High School in Norfolk, Virginia, under Larry Stepney. Coach Hill then coached under Willard Bailey at Norfolk State University. In 2000, Coach Hill received a great opportunity to coach in the Arena Two League for seven seasons, rising to head coach with the Manchester Wolves in New Hampshire. His career allowed him to work with young athletes from 20 states and coach in five. Ron and his family moved to Alpharetta, now Milton, in 2005 while coaching in the Arena Two League, and his wife Dana, right, Dana, relocating with her company. They are proud parents of six daughters and one son, each attending college and thriving in their own careers, as well as two studying at Virginia Wesleyan College, a member of their nationally ranked women's softball team and the University of Maryland. Ron and Dana's youngest are third graders at Cogburn Woods Elementary and are looking forward to following in Dad's footsteps as young athletes, starting at the recreation level here in Milton. So, Coach Hill, thank you for stepping up to the plate. I'm excited about it, being able to appoint you. Coach has a lot of ideas to bring to the plate as we begin our Birmingham Park Master Planning Update process and our comprehensive parks planning process. So, thank you, Coach.
We have a motion and a second to, Councilmember Tark. Remember.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve a resolution, amending resolution number 11-03-173. A resolution appointing a member to the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for District Six.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion by Councilmember Durham, second by Councilmember Bailey. There's no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's unanimous. So, if Coach Hill wants to, like to step forward, I'd be glad to swear him in. Looks like we got some great experience coming on board. That's awesome. I just solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
That I will faithfully perform the duties of...
A Parks and Recreation Advisory Board member.
Parks and Recreation Advisory Board member.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And laws of the state of Georgia.
And the United States of America.
The United States of America.
Thank you, sir. Also, I want to thank your family for allowing your Dad and others to help us out, and help Lou and them do some things that you girls can participate in more courses and stuff, as any other...
Do we still have it? Mayor, I've just been thinking, those young ladies would probably love to get a picture of their father, wife, and the mayor, maybe Alan, they're just really excited about being here. Does anybody have a camera still?
I don't have a camera.
I was thinking those little girls are gonna come up and be with the mayor and get a picture of their dad.
Do they have a camera?
They just look, they need a picture. Alan, you should get down there. Not even the whole camera, I just think that you guys, they look too excited. They were like, just so excited for the dad when he was up there.
Or they kept their hands full.
You guys want to come up in?
All right, Matt, here we go. One, two, three. One more.
Well, thanks again, and we appreciate all our volunteers, so appreciate your time. All right, yeah, just wanna, let's say, reiterate the 9/11 memorial service, but not, I think most everybody heard, but again, we, City of Milton is having a joint memorial service for 9/11, this Sunday at 1:30 with Alpharetta, at the Alpharetta Public Safety Center. So, hope everybody can attend, and please let everyone know. Thank you. Is there anything, any council members want to report on? Julie?
Chris, you may have an update for us either tonight, or if not, maybe we could talk about it next week. I know that I've been in touch with you, and I'd heard from Principal Freiberger, and I just wondered if maybe you could give us a quick update on where we are with the land between Crab Apple Crossing and northwestern, the parkland, and in particular with our new Parks and Recreation Appointment and Advisory Member here. I just wanna emphasize that I do think it's really important that we obviously try to proceed as quickly as we can in getting that two-acre parkland underway. And so, I just wondered if tonight we could have a quick update, or if we had a sense of how that was proceeding.
Yeah, we certainly can, if John's prepared to give one. I don't know that I'm prepared.
And if not tonight, maybe at least with all of us.
Do you get prepared to give one?
The update as of today is I received a 90% drawings from the engineer.
Great.
And I put them on the review desk today for erosion control. Wait for comments to come back. If all goes well, and I mean, it has to go absolutely perfect, we could be looking at, maybe doing a groundbreaking ceremony sometime in December. It really depends on how long the erosion control permit and approval process takes with the state.
Right.
But it is moving. We're at 90%. I sent Principal Freiberger a PDF copy of the plan, so he could take a look at it, and we're going through all of the processes now.
And it's my understanding that Fulton County, obviously, or the Board of Fulton County, also has to be engaged in that process, and that's in part what has delayed this process a little bit, and so I think that's just important. And so, one, I wanted to just thank our Parks and Recreation Director for helping to move that forward, but it's obviously important, and I'm sure it's important to those, not only at the school, but I'm sure other members of council. But I just wanted to make the point tonight that I surely support seeing that proceed as quickly as we can, and I wanted to thank you for your efforts.
Thanks, John. Okay, anybody else, council? No, I'll move to that.
Couple of things tonight. I just wanna recognize again, Tom Wilson, for his service to the City of Milton. Tom, after this tour, will be not with us after Friday, although he's still gonna be around and...
He's always with us.
He's always with us, so we thank Tom again for...
I know, he can really go on vacation. He won't be with us then.
Stepping in.
Where are you going on vacation, Tom?
South America.
Oh.
If anybody wanna go with me.
Yeah.
You deserve it, Tom.
You've got a three strikes, you're out, three strikes, and you're on vacation, right?
It's also with pleasure tonight that I get to introduce to you, and I actually wanna do a couple, well, I wanna do two tonight, because I've never really officially introduced our Parks and Rec Director to you. I had to apologize to him after the last meeting, because I was supposed to do that, and I had this moment that all of a sudden, I just forgot. So, I sent him an email the next day, and I said, I don't know how that happened. I didn't even think about it till the next day. So, officially, I want to introduce John Rebar to you, which I'm sure you have all met at this point, but he's had a great time with us for the first month. We're already seeing movement. He's stepping into the shoes of a very fabulous Parks Director, so, but, you know, I also say that John will keep that ship moving, and it's gonna go in a good direction. So, we welcome John here officially with us. As well as today, the first, for her first day, is our Community Development Director, Kathy Field. And Kathy, most recently comes to us from the City of McDonough, Georgia, and before that, spent some time serving at the City of Roswell. I say sometime, that equates to like more than five years, which is a little bit longer than sometime. And then, spent a lot of time doing some planning in the northeast. So, Kathy, a very, very, very seasoned professional, is going to take the reins of the Community Development Department and move us forward from here. There's not a lot, I tried to find something that Kathy hadn't done when I talked to her, and I still haven't found that. So, I'm still looking in that community development world for something that Kathy hasn't done. So, please welcome Kathy as well to our team.
Certainly, excited to have you here, Kathy, and look forward to working with you, and the same goes true for John, too. So, thank you, guys. We...
I haven't done anything John hasn't done either. He sent me an email last night that shows me, showed me the politics he came from, or what was going on politically in the Doral community. It's awfully quiet and sleepy up here in North Atlanta compared to what I read last night. Okay.
Well, we just welcome you guys to our team, and I think you'll find and agree that City of Milton, we're pretty fortunate, we got some top-notch staff, and we really appreciate them and are aware of that fact, that Chris has put together a great team.
Thank you. I wanna touch this briefly, so you, if you look at the work session agenda for next week, I had made reference in our budget hearing that we were going to have a discussion on the future vision of the Hopewell House at next week's meeting. You'll see that's not on the agenda. The reason that's not on the agenda is I am awaiting the documents that we are moving, that Lou Oliver is preparing for us, that documented the house. At last check, he said he would have those to us no later than the 15th of this month. It was just too much, the 15th, this meeting being on the 12th, he was gonna try to push it to get it done. It was just enough of a risk there that even if I got them, I was gonna get them the day of the meeting, and I didn't, I certainly don't wanna advertise an agenda, I am come prepared for a good discussion and not be able to have it. So, I just wanna officially tell you that I'm gonna move that to October.
I have a question.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as that discussion of the visioning for the Hopewell House, I realize, I don't know if it's the cart before the horse, but are, is staff going to be providing us with some, A, recommendations or possible uses, and if you are, are you gonna be providing some projections and revenues, kind of thing?
Projections and revenues, more importantly, projections and cost.
Okay.
You know, that's really what I need, we kinda have to have that discussion at this point, as to whether or not, as to how, make sure our mindset is right. Make sure our mindset is your mindset, when we figure out exactly how you anticipate that reconstruction renovation going. And I do want to be able to bring you something more than just, guys, tell me what you think, which, you know, a lot of, a lot of that goes to us getting officially documented with some CAD drawings of this house, that we can peel back layers, we can add layers, we can say, you know, what if we did this? What would it look like? What if we did that? What would it look like? If you were to do that, the square footage would be this, and that's what that would mean to the house. So, you know, we're putting ourselves with having the data to be able to have a meaningful discussion, more so than just saying, what do y'all think?
It would just be good, and you probably already contemplated this, if we're gonna talk about expenditures on the house itself, it would be good, you know, based on different uses, it would be good to also have projected revenues on the flip side of that. If we're spending money, it would be good to know how much money we're gonna get back based on the different uses that we might think about.
And what we can do is anticipate some of those based on similar type of uses in other places, and what that has, you know, what that has meant.
Okay.
Let's you know that a team from Milton tomorrow night is going to be down in Atlanta participating, I don't know how I got talked into this, in the 5K Corporate Challenge that Kaiser is doing. But you'll have a Milton team represented tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, in that, in that 5K. And they said it starts, I said earlier today, it starts at 7:00, I plan on being done at about 7:12, so...
I was just gonna say, do you have a personal, a PR that you're trying to run?
She's not running.
That's right, so I'm on the sideline cheering. And final staff report we have tonight comes from Chief Edgar, before we go into executive session, on the results of the Muscular Dystrophy Association's boot drive for this year.
Mayor Council, over the last three months, the firefighters have hit the street again this year with the annual boot drive for the Muscular Dystrophy Association, and last year, in 2010, we raised over forty-eight thousand dollars, and I'm pleased to announce this year that we've raised over sixty thousand dollars.
Wow.
That's over a twelve thousand dollar increase over last year, and that puts us second in the state in a boot drive collection. Well, let me clarify that, we're only second behind Warner Robbins, who does an annual, all-year-long event for Muscular Dystrophy. They don't even put a boot in the street and collect in the street at all, they do golf tournaments, barbecues, and all of that, all year long, to raise the money that they raise, which is probably double what we have. This is strictly standing out in the street, and in those temperatures during the last three months of the summer, collecting from the citizens of Milton and the visitors, so I thank you to them and our firefighters for what a great job they've done.
I have to ask, Chief, do y'all actually wear those boots? That's what my daughter asked me. She was, she was mystified, one time we were in a stoplight, she said, "God, I wonder if they wear those boots."
You can always tell when they left, because of the coins in there.
And you'll see that we posted on our website today, apparently we not only have received some monetary contributions, we also have received a wedding band. So, to the person that maybe have lost a wedding band in our boot...
Oh, wow, no.
It was at the Birmingham, Birmingham, Hickory Clack section.
Somebody just...
They could certainly call, and we have their...
Could it, the better uses.
Does it have any kind of inscription on the inside or anything?
Have not found anything to be able to identify.
I was just going to say that when you guys were out, because just my driving pattern had me passing many of our wonderful public safety officers, and I'd continue to get those badges, and I'd say, "Guys, you need water," and they'd say, "No, no, really, we're fine," and, but they, I mean, they wouldn't be out there for an hour, they wouldn't be out there for two hours, they were out there all day, and it is, of course, we've all experienced those temperatures, but not on the asphalt with the exhaust and a hundred, a hundred and ten degrees, and it just was amazing, so, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion, a second to adjourn into executive session to talk about land acquisition? So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You're pugged. You're in.
Goodbye, ladies.
With me if it's okay with the council to allow them to make some public comment.
Absolutely.
Do we need to do a motion second to allow, open back up for public comment?
I'm in the agenda to hear some public comments.
Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to allow public comment at this point?
So moved.
Second.
Alright, we've got two motions, two seconds. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that's your names. Okay, city clerk, we have some public comment? They could probably speak and then finish their cards, is that correct?
Yeah.
If you guys would like to go ahead and speak and then you can fill out the cards afterwards.
Okay, hi, I'm Robin Coletti, business address?
Just, that's fine.
Okay, 12635 Crab Apple Road, Suite 230, Milton 30004. I am one of the owners of Dogwash Cafe and I've been recently cited for the sign code violations. And basically what the violation indicated is I have decals on my windows. And there are paw prints, it says grooming, and then on another window it says dogwash. These decals have been up for almost two years and prior to the decals being on the windows, which had nothing, most people thought it was a vacant location. We almost went out of business, we had very little money for advertising. And so what we did is sat down, and this is my business partner Gus that will be speaking in a moment, what we did is sat down and thought of the best way to spend our advertising money, which was basically nothing, and to get the word out that we were in business in a grooming shop. So, you know, we did some research, ended up deciding on the decals, had them put up, all of a sudden we had walk-in traffic. We were asking, "Had you here?" and we saw your windows, we were driving by, we didn't even know you were there. And we have a sign above the store that says Pet Wash and Boutique. Business started booming, we had to hire another groomer, we had to hire another bather, and, I mean, and things have been great since then. Now, on the 31st, we received a violation for the decals and we were told we had till the 6th to get them off. Basically, it was three business days. Then I called Deidra to talk to her about it, because I was not there when the violation was received, and I received her call back today. I've called her twice, received her call back today. I do understand she was on vacation on Friday and Tuesday, so she did call me back tonight, it was around 5 o'clock-ish, and basically said, you know, "Write me a two or three liner," this and that. Well, that gives me an additional 14 days. And basically 14 days having my decals up, well, once I take them down, the first thing people are going to think is I went out of business. People are going to stop coming, I'm not going to get the new customers that I've been getting because of the signage traffic. And basically, I'm going to end up being backed into a corner of making a decision. I can go out of business, or I can move. I have another shop in Alpharetta, Winward Commons. Winward Commons in Alpharetta, and both shops have been open the same amount of time. I will have to say, Alpharetta treats us like gold. They want our business, they come by, I have officers that come by, I've had the code people come by, they're, they're all just very happy we're there. We have the exact same signage on those windows as we have at Crab Apple. Those windows also give us the foot traffic. And basically, I mean, it's, my partner and I have to make a decision. If we have to take the decals down, we are likely going to default on our lease and move to Alpharetta. It's a better option than going out of business. One shop will not support both shops. And right now, with our economy, especially with the summer months, as, you know, I know you know a lot of business owners, the summer months are very, very excruciating. And we've had to take money out of our savings account to pay rent and payroll. And if I take the signs down, I will not survive. So, my only option is, is, you know, leave my leasing company and default on them to be able to stay in business and move to Alpharetta. I don't see any other way around it. And I mean, if there's some way we can get a variance that's long enough to leave the decals up while we work through the, you know, the ordinances and what kind of changes we can make, or anything we can do to not have to pull those down, I'm willing to try because I don't want to leave Milton. I love the Crab Apple area and my husband and I have even talked about moving over there. Now with this, if I have to, basically, if it, if I have to make a decision of shutting my business or moving, I certainly wouldn't move there as a resident.
Thirty seconds remaining, please.
So, that's, you know, pretty much it. I'm not very good at public speaking. So, rather than rambling, thank you very, very much for your time, and I appreciate you staying late and listening to us.
No problem, and just for the, for the record, public comments at a time when you're welcome to make comments and, and, you know, just like you did, you know, it's not a time where we can discuss it back and forth with you. But we certainly can, you can, our staff can get with you guys tomorrow or at some point very soon, and then the staff can work with us as council moving forward to deal with any issues. But, you know, I certainly want to recommend that our staff and you guys get together as soon as possible and, and talk, and then they'll take it from there.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming to talk to us.
Thank you very, very much.
Is the phone number still on the card?
Um, I will, I'm still filling out.
Is the phone number on the card for me?
Okay, I will, thank you.
My next comment comes from...
Pretty much summed up the situation for us.
Can you state your name, surname?
Oh, I'm sorry, Gus Calanzas. I'm Robin's partner at Dogwash Cafe.
It's same address, it'd be the same address as the cafe.
And just wanted to emphasize, every time our new customers come in, we ask how, the majority of the time, I was driving by, I saw the signs. Our decals don't take up any more on our windows than what we have right here. They're, you can stand in front of any window, see inside the shop, they're, they're white paw prints and lettering going across the window that says "Dogwash" and "Grooming" across another window. It's more than 5%. I didn't realize there was a 5% ordinance. 5%, the ADT sign on our window is more than 5%. We very much appreciate the atmosphere that's there, but we're just hoping that we can reach a compromise here and be able to have a sign on our window as people drive by that they can see what the business is. I see, we have a picture. This is very similar to the architecture of our shop. There's three businesses there that looks abandoned from the street. There's nothing there as people drive by. We don't want to create an atmosphere where we've got a barber pole spinning or anything like that, but just to inform the public as they're coming by that there's a shop here. We have a very strong passion for what we do, and a lot of good customers, but is this really what the intention is? That looks like it abandoned, picture of their... But they're compliant. There's three businesses in that location. Do you know what they do?
So that's Birmingham?
I don't know. We can reach some type of compromise still. You didn't say that. Doesn't fit with our personalities or our business. Okay, excuse me. And that's really it, we're just hoping that maybe some of our, our ordinances are not real business, business friendly, and maybe we could loosen them a little bit to still keep the atmosphere that we want, but still provide a little bit of, of, of a way for business to say, "We're here, we're open," and not doing it in an obnoxious manner. We'd like to try to work it with you all if we can, but if we can't, taking those signs down is just, it's, there are going to be people that come by, what happened with them? Where have they gone now? You know, maybe when we started the business, if someone had come by and said, "Here are the rules." But we go to the website and we, we see a 5% rule, we see that it's too complicated for a business person to understand if they're in compliance or not. We didn't feel like we were doing anything wrong, and then two years after we've opened the business, we're cited? And we've paid money, these signs weren't something we just threw up on our own, we had a designer come in, do this for it, now we have to take them down? I'm not sure that that's the best thing for the city of Milton and for the businesses here. I understand, you know, we had some businesses in the area that were maybe a little more boisterous in their signage than, maybe than we'd want to see. But seems like, I know all the, of all the businesses in the area, and I think we talked to over 23 yesterday, only four were not cited. And is that really what we want to do to our business community here?
Thirty seconds remaining, please.
Thank you.
And one thing I do want to say, thank you for sticking around. I know it's been a long... And, and again, we, I, I think I can speak for the council also, I always appreciate, you know, whether it's good news or bad news, someone letting us know rather than just, you know, not letting anybody know and grumbling and, and whatever. So I appreciate your time coming up here and letting us know. And I'm sure that our, our staff will get together with you guys and discuss this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, would it be appropriate to ask a question of staff?
Chris, I know that at one point, this was back during the Howie Nine, when we looked at neon signs in Howie Nine, and staff was looking at the sign ordinance and was going to provide recommendations to us. Where are we with that, that might be?
It rests in the planning commission at this point.
Yeah.
It will be coming to you all after it navigates through the flow chart process.
Yeah, let me, let me, and let me say this, this is not directed directly at you guys because we're not discussing this back and forth, but in general, to the, the public that we are aware of some of these issues, we are addressing some sign issues, it's in our planning commission right now, we're looking for recommendations. Also, in general, recently, I've heard from several businesses in the Crab Apple and Birmingham areas of the same, same issue, so it is something that's important, is being addressed, so. Alright.
Is there any way to get on one of their sign committees?
The answer I would give there is, if you visit our website, you see when the planning commission's meeting, they'll, they will take comment during their meeting as well as they start to make recommendations. That would be the best immediate way to get some impact. I mean, it's great to come in, we'd like, love for people to come talk to the council, but to influence the document that actually is going to make it to the council, that's the right, that's a good spot right now. I'll call you tomorrow and help you work through that and understand that process.
You have two, you have two opportunities, one with the planning commission, and then once they make their recommendations, it comes to us, then you also have the opportunity to come speak in front of us because, you know, we can approve or not approve or, or adjust that, so.
I'll call you tomorrow.
I'm going to ask one other question. In Crab Apple, if I'm not mistaken, aren't the eels also allowed? I just didn't know if you, it just, and again, I'm not trying to, to the... I was just going to say that I do believe maybe Chris, is that within what is allowed in Crab Apple, as you're reaching out to these folks, and the other thing is, because I know that other businesses in Crab Apple have eels that are keeping with the areas. So anyway, it's not that those are things that are being evaluated.
Do I have a motion that we adjourn?
We have two more public comments.
Oh, we do, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. We will, we'll, two more public comments.
Next one is Paul Churekis.
And I'm sorry about that.
Churekis, that's how it's pronounced. Pretty close, better than most.
I apologize, I didn't realize we had two more, so go ahead.
Basically, it's going to be short for me. The amount of money that I spent putting up that sign...
If you would mind, just for the record, name and address.
Oh, sorry, Paul Churekis, 12635 Crab Apple Road, Milton, Georgia, 30004. So basically, I opened four, five months ago. Seventy-five percent of my customers come in because of the signs. If I don't have that, I could probably stay open another two months. So on top of that, I also spent, I think roughly 600 bucks to get the signs designed put up, and, I mean, it may not seem like a lot, but when you're first opening a business, every penny counts, and 600 bucks, you know, that's like a week's rent. So, that, I mean, that, that's just a waste of money for me, and with, with the percentage of the customers that I get in because of the signs, if I have to take them down, like I said, I got two months at best. So, I mean, basically, I, I want to try and stress the urgency of the matter, because if I have to take them down in the next 14 days, I can't afford to put them back up right now. So, I mean, I guess that's about it. It's just, it's very urgent for us and very important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last comment comes from Joyce Abraham.
Joyce Abraham, and I'm at 755 Mid Broadwell Road, and I'm Milton 30004. I am one of the four businesses that were not cited. I just moved to the area four months ago from Johns Creek. I had the same problem in Johns Creek that my colleagues are talking about now, and it was the reason that I moved from Johns Creek, because I just, I was on, I, I wasn't getting the visibility from the street for the business, and it was really hurting me. And yes, I did have the signage patrol come by... And yes, I did have the signage patrol come by and, and told me that I needed to change my signage that I had in Johns Creek. So, when I moved to Milton, I was very careful to put the signage together to accommodate Milton's guidelines, but it cost me a lot. And so, the five thousand dollar signage that I used in Johns Creek, I couldn't use it anymore, so I had to spend another three thousand dollars to do it in Milton all over again. So, I, I recognize that it's a fine line and it really can break your business, such as it did mine's in Johns Creek. And now I've invested so much upfront coming into Milton, many times I have to ask myself, did I risk the upfront investment? Am I going to be able to get my business to generate enough so that I can make up for that? But at the same point in time, everyone who comes in tells me that they came in because they can see my signage. My colleagues don't have the advantage that I have, I actually looked for a corner building just so that I could accommodate the signage. And that was exactly the reason why I was there. I would not locate anywhere else in Milton for that purpose. But thank you for listening, and it's just the, the other side of the coin, and I need to be supportive because I don't know when that tide turns again. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, any more public comment?
That's all, sir.
If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Sub move, second.
All right, have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.